All right, we want to welcome everyone to tonight's board meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. It's Monday, October 9th, 2017, and with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Somebody like to make a motion for the approval of the revised agenda? Second?
Second.
And this will be a roll call.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Borchstein?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. With that, we'll move into a public hearing, BA 18136, a public hearing for instructional time reporting at hours versus days for the 2018-19 school year. Dr. Buck, do you have any comments or anything on that?
No, this has become our standard practice. So, a few years ago, the legislature gave the flexibility, we used to be required to have 180 days of instruction, and now you can choose 180 days of instruction or 1,080 hours, and so, we've done this, I don't know, the last several years. And what it does is it gives us additional flexibility in building our schedule, and we usually start the year exceeding it by about 30 or so hours.
Great. Laurel, for this public hearing, have you received any written correspondence?
I received no written correspondence.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board during this public hearing regarding instructional time reporting in hours versus days? All right, seeing none, that public hearing is closed. Next, we'll move to superintendent's report. It'll turn over to you, Dr. Buck.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you. So, last Friday, Jackson Elementary students participated in an engineering design process that engaged all grade levels. The students were tasked with using STEM, that's Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, to create engineering solutions for problems found in their favorite fairy tales. For instance, kindergartners read Goldilocks and the Three Bears and then worked together to construct a chair that would hold Goldilocks when she visited the Three Bears. Meanwhile, 4th graders utilized STEM skills to design and construct a parachute that would bring a Lego version of Jack safely down from his beanstalk. They tested their creations from the top of the stairs, and each descent was timed to be slow enough to protect Jack from harm. So, these engineering design activities were a hit with the students, as you might guess. Close to 1,000 4th and 5th graders from across the district gathered last week to exercise and learn more about healthy habits. Hy-Vee sponsored the Kids Fit Exercise Event at Coke College's Clark Stadium. A certified personal trainer led the event by getting everyone motivated to exercise and discussing why it's important to maintain a healthy lifestyle. This is one of many activities associated with Hy-Vee's Kids Fit Program, and their website is a helpful resource featuring materials on exercise, dietitian blogs, and health challenges. Metro High School students spanned out across the city to volunteer during their annual volunteer event called Chicken Stock. Also known as the Day of Caring, Chicken Stock honors a former Metro staffer named James "Chicken" Maddox, who had a passion for volunteering. While at Metro, James organized groups of students to help in the community and shared with them the importance of volunteering. He passed away in 2000, in the year 2000, but the student, the school continues its legacy on this annual Day of Caring when students volunteer in a variety of ways, including volunteering at Horizons, cleaning up trash in the community, and creating art for the Jane Boyd Center. And then, lastly here tonight, former Kennedy Cougar Sergeant 1st Class Justin Colbert was recently awarded the Quilt of Valor for his military service. Colbert graduated in 2001 and joined the Iowa National Guard. His first combat experience was at 19, and he has served in both Iraq and Afghanistan. The Quilt of Valor is awarded to service personnel who've served in combat situations as a comforting thank you for their service to the country. Colbert's former teacher, Joe Benedict, nominated him for the award as a show of gratitude for his military service and for continuing to share his experiences with students as an annual visiting speaker.
Terrific, thank you, Dr. Buck. Very inspiring. Are there any board reports tonight?
I don't have a report, but I have a comment that Alliant Energy was one of the sponsors of the manufacturing conference that was started on Thursday evening and then went into Friday, and our own Noreen Bush presented it, I think, on two separate breakouts, talking about engaging our manufacturing businesses in the community to connect with our students. And I think it was very well received, and you guys did a really nice job, so I wanted to thank, thank you for doing that.
That's great. Thank you, Mary. Any other board reports or comments?
I will say that the board had an opportunity to meet with other area school boards last week at, and along with Kirkwood Community College, and there was a breakout, some learning sessions, and I attended one on professional learning that college community is doing for their teaching staff. It was blended learning, so teachers actually go back, basically, into the classroom, they're doing online learning, and see sort of what the students will be experiencing as they move into a blended learning environment. So, that was pretty powerful, and I know some of the other board members had a chance to learn about some other things, so it was really kind of a neat way for the local school boards to share their experience, and superintendents were there as well, so, good experience. The board will also have a chance to attend the Iowa Association of School Boards Conference coming up next month, so we'll have a chance to do some more professional learning as board members together, so that's always a good, good opportunity. All right, with that, we'll move to communications, delegations, and petitions. This is a time for those in the public to address the board related to items about the school district. We have two requests before us today, so I would ask that those who are speaking to the board, when you're ready, approach the podium, give us your name and your address. And Laurel Day, the board secretary here, will put a timer on for five minutes, and at the end of the five minutes, she'll make sure that you're reminded to add your remarks. At some point, with some comments, we will refer them back to the administration, so depending on your feedback to the board, we may ask administrators to get back in touch with you, depending on what topics you're bringing to the board. First, tonight, we have Chris Gurkey.
Chris, if you'd like to approach the podium and just again, give us your name and your address.
Chris Gurkey, May 22, Augusta Drive, Southeast. And I got two comments tonight. The first one is real simple, on the personnel report, I'd like to understand more about the behavioral analyst hirings, or placements, or whatever. That's a pretty big chunk of change, I just want to know how it's going to impact the students, how about the teachers, the staff in the building, to make sure that they're going to support they need.
You would like someone to follow up with you about that?
You know, you can talk about it later during your consent agenda, or whatever you want to do, but it's just, it's a lot of money to be spending without really knowing what it's going for in the district, so. On a more important note, the, I got some concerns about the budgets for the 13 school sites. Where, the chart that's been around shows, but savings of just under $3 million, which is great, but those saving numbers, I worry, are going to be not good for our students. We're asking our counselors to take on a 60% increase in the student workload, something where, as we just spent three people at $83,000 a year for behavioral analysts, dropping down the number of counselors, and increasing the workload, doesn't seem like those two numbers really match up together. I think our counselors, right now, are probably overworked. We got about 22 employed in the district. If even we went to 200 building at 13, that's a million dollars off of our savings, so our actual $2.8 million drops down to 1.8. Same thing goes with building secretaries, we're asking them to take on another 60% of students, not including preschool, other options that go on in the school and what they do. And I worry that without looking at a full budget plan for what this actually means, there's got to be savings in there somewhere, because we're operating eight less buildings potentially, so there should be savings in there somewhere. I'm worried that we're not looking at the full picture, and that we're not addressing all the savings where they could be or not be. Gary, you voted against Polk closing, you had some great comments four years ago, five years ago, whenever it was. I'd like to see those kind of questions and concerns come from the board, not just community members, that really look at, are we going to save money? We closed Polk and Monroe to save a million dollars a year, and one of the buildings is still open, so I don't think our savings are there, or anywhere near what we had planned on five years ago. If we really think that we can sustain some of these budget numbers, I question honestly, why haven't we made changes yet? If we can, we can operate the district successfully with 13 counselors, why are we employing 22? If we can handle less building secretaries than can handle more students, then why are we employing them? Either it's going to work at 13 buildings, or it's not, and if it's going to work at 13 buildings, some of this stuff, there's no reason why it can't work now, instead of saving money today. And that's all I wanted to say. I just hope we look at the full picture, because I don't think the savings are going to be there where we're projecting them at, but.
Mr. Gurkey, would you like the people that have the figures, that have put those together, to contact you, because I think that some of the information may be a little bit off, so either Dr. Buck and/or Steve Graham?
I met with Steve last week.
Okay.
And I kept hearing, one of the things was economies of scale, and that's fine when you're talking about operating a business, but we're talking about student to staff ratios, and we're talking about increasing students to staff ratios, some were, I mean, 60% is what we're asking our counselors to take on, our secretaries to take on, our nurses are going up, our health secretaries are going up. Walk into school between the hours of, you know, elementary school between the hours of like 8:20 and 9:00, and see what goes on in that office, and then picture that with anywhere to be in the building, you know, of anywhere from two to four, anywhere kids in that building, and see if those nurses and those secretaries can track students, phone call things, find kids on buses, chase everything down. It's a zoo, and that's a huge increase, and I talked to Steve, I saw his numbers, and it's good, but that, that chart is like this much of the full budget, and I think that wouldn't be, before we say, yeah, this is a great plan, we're going to save money, what's the full budget look like? What's the whole building operation cost look like, not just these couple spots that we identified savings at?
Sure. Well, I appreciate your comments, and since you've already met with Steve, again, I think for us, the board has not really been presented with a plan yet, but if you would, put your questions in writing, you can send them directly to me or to Dr. Buck, but we'll make sure that the board has them, so as it does come to us, we'll have those concerns in writing.
Okay. And I think more than three listening sessions in November would be prudent, too, if you're talking about a big change for the city, not just three nights in one week.
Yep, there are multiple board meetings as well, so we're open to listening to the public.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, and next, we have Kristin Valencia. Kristin, if you had approached the podium, and just give us your name and address, and again, Laurel Day, our board secretary, will remind you when your five minutes is up.
Kristin Valencia, 50740th Street Northeast. I apologize, I'm going to be reading directly off this, because I got the email on Thursday, and now I'm here.
Absolutely fine, yep.
So, hello, everyone, I'm here today because I received an email that there will no longer be celebrations of Halloween, winter, and Valentine's Day at any, at my son's school, and it hurt me deeply. These celebrations are not about singling out, it's about bringing people together. Holidays are part of American culture, people from all over the world choose to be here because their country lacks something that we are strong in, and that's diversity. We learn who people are from traditions. If we stop these celebrations, we are stopping our children from getting to know their schoolmates. Why are we taking that away from them? In the world we live in today, with all the hatred and dividing our country, why would we stop something that brings people together? If they feel it is a waste of time, then make it more educational. Teach students about the Life Santa Pumpkins, or the Day of the Dead, don't let it be just about one thing. Instead of only singing jingy balls, look deeper into cultures and add what they do. We all celebrate, it's just in different ways. I know it's hard to accommodate all cultures, but eliminating these celebrations is doing just that. We are making this about religion, and it should not be. As a Wiccan, I have no issue with my son celebrating the opposite of what I do. All these celebrations are meant to make the kids feel happy. Expand it, embrace it, do not take it away, evolve it. Our children are so sensitive these days, and the little things in life bring them so much joy. You don't know if a child comes from abusive or unstable home, and they may look forward to a Valentine's Day card that shows them that someone cares. This decision, I feel, was made without the students in mind, allowed them to decide what they want to do. Take a few moments, create a form asking the children how they feel about the celebration, and base your decision on that. This should not be about the parents. This was never an issue five, 10, 100 years ago, or even last year, and it should not be an issue now. We are taking away the chance for our children to grow, be understanding, express themselves, and be creative. But most importantly, we're taking away their chance to have fun and be kids. In a world when we're taking so many steps backwards, let's take a few steps forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would you like any administrator to follow up with you on this concern?
Yes, please.
Okay. Dr. Buck, appropriate administrator will be in contact with you. Thank you. All right, with that, we want to thank everybody for their comments to the board tonight. And next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull for question or comment? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the, to approve the consent agenda, including the personnel report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, and this is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Borchstein? Aye.
Director Meisterling? Aye. President Laberty?
Aye. Great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to learning and leadership, our accessible instructional materials update, and I'll turn it over to you, Wendy. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. We're going to be talking to you about accessible instructional materials, sometimes you'll also hear it as AIM, also A-E-M, Accessible Educational Materials. My name is Wendy Parker, I'm the Executive Director of Special Services, and this is my second year. And last year, one of the things that I did was, I did listening sessions with lots of different groups, from regular ed teachers to pairs to special ed teachers, and one of the groups I met with was parents. And one of their biggest issues was assistive technology, and the lack of assistive technology they felt that their children were getting in the district. So, I did quite a bit of exploring around that, and we determined that we really needed to make a big push in the area of assistive technology. We talked about, should we pilot it somewhere, you know, maybe, maybe just at the middle school level, maybe just at the high school, and the more we looked at it, and my own personal passion around assistive technology, and I know what it means for access for students, we decided, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to do this district-wide, we're going to assess students, we're going to determine who needs, and who would benefit, and that's what we ended up doing. And when I say "we," I mean "we," because I did not do this on my own at all. And I don't think I'm overstating this when I say that I believe accessibility for children with disabilities is a civil rights issue. Right? You know, if you're, if you're sitting in class and you're unable to access the content because you have reading issues, for example, but we've got this device right here that we could give to you, that would give you access, we need to do that. You know, the other piece of it was, we talked a lot about things, some of the things that we do to help with access is, for example, having adults read things to kids. And I've been doing this for, I've been working with adults and children with disabilities for 31 years, and most of that time in schools, and I have yet to see a pair walk across the stage with a student, you know, into their lives with them. But I think it, you know, and that's what it would take, to transfer that, that help for a student, but kids can have a device at the other side of that stage, right? So, that's the other thing we talked about, is, is what are we exposing students to that they're going to be able to use for their entire lives? One of the reasons that I became so passionate about assistive technology is, prior to coming here, I was an AEA Special Ed Director at Prairie Lakes AEA, and Maggie Pickett, she can give a little wave there, she was working for the Department of Education as instructional materials, accessible materials coordinator, and I got the pleasure of hearing her multiple times and listening to her talk about data and results and opportunities for kids, and I was completely sold, and so, we stole her, the Department of Ed, because to do this, it wasn't something that we're going to be able to do with the, with the capacity that we had. So, Maggie started in April, I believe, and then Rose Hayes, who's been in the district a couple years, just a couple years, she was the second big hire that we did, moving her over to be our AIM coach, and we also had a lot of help from the AEA, but these two people have been incredible, and their advocacy and passion for this work is incredible. So, I'm going to turn it over to Maggie, and she's going to go through some slides for you, and then we will answer any questions that you have.
Good evening. Thanks for having us up here today. Wendy is correct, this has been a lot of work and a lot of coordination, but we're happy to be here. So, accessibility, I think Wendy talked about AIM, we get mixed up in alphabet soup, and so the way we've been trying to refer to it is really referring to it as what it is. It's providing students technology and supports to access learning. And accessibility is really, it spreads across a lot of different areas that we really teach and support in the district, but we're focused on reading, because that's what AIM is. So, AIM, but this is what it really is. So, because we're focused on reading, I'm just going to get a common understanding across all of people here, and talk about reading development, because this is where I think, where we have some kids falling down. So, this is Scarborough's Rope, this illustration really depicts kind of the process and the intermingledness that it takes to build good strategic readers. And so, the top components, there are five, five skills that you need in the area of language, and I'm a certified speech and language pathologist, so that's my, that's my wheelhouse, that's where I live. But then the three skills down below are those word recognition skills, and those are the skills phonological awareness, all those great skills that we learn in early, early elementary school, right? And so, we have a lot of kids getting to the end, and this rope starts to weave together with all of these skills, and at the end, we have good strategic readers, but we know for some kids, that just doesn't happen. And oftentimes, it's in the area of word recognition, from what our data is showing us, that we have kids falling down, it's like a brick wall goes up. And so, what do we do? Well, a lot of really, really intelligent people, from the Council of Chief State School Officers, a group got together and looked at what technology and supports can do for these kids. And so, this is an illustration of what technology can do to support students with disabilities. And so, you'll see the graph on the Y-axis, the vertical, it's looking at grade level achievement. So, I'm in kindergarten, and I'm achieving like a first grade student, yay. And then the X-axis would be grade level in school, so where you're actually at in school. And so, you'll see three different lines represented. The lowest line there would be a student going through school and not getting any additional support, so if they're a struggling reader, they're not getting any additional interventions. Now, we know in our district, we have data to show that that's not any student in our district. We use universal screening protocol to screen students, and if they need it, they're getting that support. The next line, are students with intervention. So, students are identified through universal screener, we've got some struggles, and we put them into interventions to teach those skill deficit areas. That's where most of our kids are falling, if they're falling down in reading. The difficulty is, is that when you're learning how to read in early elementary school, the gap that we talk about, we always talk about closing the achievement gap, the gap is small relatively, and so, as students start to kind of progress in their, in their, in their grade in school, but their skills aren't being addressed, or are being addressed, we still have that gap, and that gap gets wider. You'll notice at fifth or sixth grade, that gap explodes, and we start to see that in our, in our schools. In fact, literacy achievement, or perceived literacy achievement and behavior go hand in hand. So, if we have students who are struggling in the area of literacy that we may not have caught, or identified through our universal screenings, then, then we might, on the flip side, see some behavior concerns. And so, we see this in our schools, but what we've done now, and that's what this, the line shows, the top line is, is grade level performance, when we provide students, struggling readers, with the appropriate supports that they need, they can still access their learning and then make growth toward grade level standards. And so, essentially, what we're doing with that technology is we're building a bridge over the brick wall. We're still taking a sledgehammer to the brick wall during our direct explicit instruction, but in order for them to continue to make growth, we have to provide that bridge. And what's really, really awesome is, in my first, I think, two weeks I spent in my office, like with my earbuds in, just researching the district, and really trying to get a feel for where we're at, and the work that we're doing, and I got to hear Noreen Bush speak to you all last summer, about, or summer of 2016, about, about the theory of action, which is now our, our vision and our belief statements. And the work around accessibility as a whole, it touches on each one of these belief statements. We're talking about technology and supports for reading, it's really truly looking to make every learner future-ready. So, here's the context that we're working within. We all know the triangle, this is a multi-tiered system of supports. Historically, perception has been that students with disabilities have been like the tippity-top of that red triangle, so they're just a small population, this represents a population of students in school and the supports that they're getting. But now, from a state perspective, and I was working on some of this in my previous position, is that we're looking at specially-designed instruction, instruction for students with disabilities, and we're, we're attempting to identify what that looks like in each area of the triangle. And so, what I've learned in the district, we are knocking the yellow and the red out of the park, we are doing that and doing it well. We've struggled historically in the green, that's not uncommon, many districts do. So, that's the work. We are living in the green, and we are really supporting access to core universal instruction for students with disabilities. Now, the history of accessibility legislation is nothing new, in fact, it started in 1933, or 1931, excuse me, with copyright law. We had, we had veterans coming back from World War I, and they were exposed to some chemicals and lost their vision, and so, we needed to provide them with opportunities to read, and so, everything needed to be, that's when it started, but it's, you'll see, it's, there are a lot of different legislative movements, and the most recent would be Every Student Succeeds Act, and that's referring and targeting all students through a universal design for learning. And so, we've got a lot of components to accessibility legislation. And the federal government has done us a really nice job, helpful job, of providing us with what a definition of accessibility means, because what my definition of accessibility means and what your definition and your definition could be something completely different. And so, this is it. For students with disabilities, it is our job as educators to provide them with the opportunity to do three things. Acquire the same information, engage in the same interactions, and enjoy the same services as students without disabilities with substantially equivalent ease of use. And so, one major way to do that is to provide technology. Now, I like to take my hand and cover up that component that says students with disabilities, because we have a lot of struggling learners in the district that are not being served on individual education plans, but that's the federal definition of accessibility. So, now, here's Rose, and she's going to tell us about what we've done to get to this point.
So, we started this process, I think, last January, as we started thinking, what do we need to do? Wendy was like, we have to do something, and so, we had quite a few discussions over that, and we decided we're going to, of course, start with reading, that's really where accessibility is at. So, we looked at our three criteria, we started with our students with an IAPs, those, of course, then with reading goals, and those who are taking general assessments. And so, we needed to screen these, we identified the who, then we needed to move on to screening. Luckily, there is now this screening tool, it's called the Universal Protocol for Accommodating Reading, UPAR for short. It's an online automated tool that allows us to use data to determine what kind of reading accommodations a student might be best for them. And so, we administered this to over 1,000 students last spring, and I have to give a shout-out to our special ed teachers, because they're the ones who went through this process for us in the buildings, and did a wonderful job of getting that done. It was a big process.
Hold on for just a second, I want, the big question that this, this.
Microphone.
One of the big questions that are answered by this screener is, do I understand text? Does a student understand text read to them at a higher level than when they read it themselves?
And so, then, we just needed to look at, there's two sides to this coin, one is the content, that is what our kids are struggling with, is the material, and do they have access to that? And then the other was the delivery system. So, once we knew the who, we had this whole list of students who we learned probably would very much benefit from having a text reader available to them. We had to determine what would that delivery system be. So, we did quite a bit of discussion and investigation into that, and. And we came up with the decision to jump into full scale with the HP ProBook X360. It's a pretty lightweight, little smaller device that would be maybe a little bit easier for kids to move around with. And then on that, we needed to have some type of software. Read and Write from Text Help is one that provides quite a bit of supports in lots of areas. Reading is one, writing, and of course, that has research tools too. So it's quite versatile that we can expand to go beyond reading and get into other things here as we move through the year. We have spent quite a bit of time training to organize lots of discussions last spring with lots of different groups. And we are continuing on with lots of discussions now. For example, right now, we're working with principals to set up accessibility teams within their buildings so that we can work with each individual building to determine what they need in this whole process. So we can individualize it for them, not only for the kids, but their building and help the adults and the students learn through this process. We're also working with curriculum facilitators to make sure our curriculum is in a digital format. Because if we're gonna be using the ProBook, we have to have it in a digital format. We trained all our special ed teachers last August. They all came in for a training to learn about this. And we held three open houses in August for parents and families. They could come in and pick up the ProBook, get a basic overview of it and get some basic setup on that. As we're going through, we hear quite a few stories that those evenings, some kids are very excited about this and had lots of comments. And I think Wendy was the one who had the comment of a little boy who was fourth or fifth grade, I don't remember for sure, but after the overview, he said, "I can now raise my hand in science." So that kid was now gonna be able to be successful in a classroom setting. He was so excited about being able to participate now that he hadn't been able to before. So what's next? Moving on, we have lots of third graders now. We're continuing on with the UPAR and accessing them. We have new students who have moved into the district. We have initial placements. And then we will be also moving on to writing here in the future. And so this ends up being a continuous process. We've been working our, kind of our way around, but it's just as circular as we go through.
So we also know that as we look as a district to making every learner future ready, that we've got some additional subgroups, and I'm talking about subgroups here, but our population of students have changed. And we have a lot of data to show that we've got other students in the district who may not be accessing their curriculum and their learning materials effectively or efficiently. And so if our students have changed and their needs have changed, and it has quite changed, our populations have changed and shifted quite a bit. So if our student needs have changed, then our instruction needs to change as well. And so we're really looking to support other students in gaining access to their learning as well. How that looks is yet to be determined. But that is our goal, is to provide these supports to a broader, more diverse range of learner need.
Great. Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Kristen?
So in these last two slides, is this the mechanism that you're gonna be looking at to get to that green part of the triangle? Because I guess my concern is that if we have students out there that are struggling but aren't on an IEP, they've been able to do just enough to get by, you know, they may be viewed as the kid who's just not paying attention, whatever, but they're not on an IEP, how are we gonna get to them before that we hit the tipping point and we get that broad division?
And that's the future planning piece.
Okay.
We have the Read and Write software on every device in the district. So we bought a district license for that software. Of course, the big difference is that that student doesn't have a dedicated device, you know, for themselves. But those conversations have already started. Kids on five or four plans, our ELL population, kids who are struggling. I think that that conversation is already happening and I would be surprised if we don't start moving on that pretty quickly. You know, because once people have become more acclimated with the opportunities that this brings, then the very next question is, what about this student who could benefit from that?
So you are open right now to teacher, parent, counselor referrals in, it's not completely dependent on an IEP or anything like that?
Right now, it is dependent on an IEP mainly because we're funding it with special education funds. But as we look at our district as a whole, building our five-year technology plan, what does this mean for the rest of our students that could benefit? In fact, we just had a conversation this afternoon about, this isn't just about special ed. How are we gonna broaden the scope?
So we have additional work underway and this might be a helpful sort of fill-in-around-the-edges part. So we have, I shouldn't have said, 20 at least schools doing a blended pilot? Nineteen? So we have a number of schools engaged in a blended learning pilot. You would have heard some from Nixon Elementary last spring, if you may recall that. So there's an intersection here between this work, the blended classroom work, which would be accessing the majority of the kids, especially those in the pilot, and the five-year technology plan. So the blended learning pilot and this work can be used to inform future practice as it relates to the technology plan. So it's keeping all of this top of mind, not as quickly as we'd like, but we're headed down that path, I think.
So there is the five-year technology plan happening and this money is coming out of special ed funds. So what funding are we looking at for some of those other resources as we move forward?
The SAFE Fund would be the primary funding source for our technology as it currently is. We've got, I think, about $54 million slated for technology investment through 2029 out of the SAFE Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Because when I'm looking at the chart here, and I know it's with the students with IEP, I look at the minority students that they're not doing well. And when you look, I mean, this is, the scores are pretty low. So I'm hoping soon that something is put in place.
Gary?
A couple of things. One, as we go out and we're now signing up for building visits, can we, I would like to see this in action. Would most elementary schools have this running? So that if I asked, I could probably see.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
And the second is, I think we've kind of hinted at it, but are there specific things that, how can we as a board help move forward? Is there something that we can do or we should be looking at as a board to be able to support your work?
Well, you know, when I think about that parent listening session I had, you know, just that continually asking questions and pushing and why aren't we and how can we? And, you know, the other piece of this, this is stressful stuff for teachers. You know, students are gonna be coming into your classroom. You need to have things accessible to them digitally, electronically. And I think that just that positive, you know, this is the road we're on, this is the right road that we're on. It's the right thing for kids. We understand that this is added stress. We wanna know what you need. You know, that's continually been the question we've been asking. How do we help you? We were out at Kennedy a week ago, a week ago, with all teachers because they had requested, they wanted some training on the software. So, you know, I think, and then feedback to us if you're hearing frustrations. But this has definitely been sort of a fire hose going off in our mouths kind of situation. You know, we're doing a lot of stuff because it's the right thing to do. But I think, you know, cheerleading for us, you know, the right work, this is the right work. We are gonna have bumps in the road, but we do need to keep on this road and we need to expand the road to more kids. That's where I would see the support. I don't know if you would have different answers?
Jennifer?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm looking at the Iowa Assessment Reading Proficiency Scores. And it looks like in 2013, 2014, there was an increase across the board in all populations for reading proficiency. And I'm wondering if those numbers, whatever has gotten us to those numbers, has been taken into consideration and included in this plan?
Well, I think, you know, as Maggie said, we're definitely not giving up on that direct instruction piece. You know, this is, you know, this is access and receiving content, which is very, very helpful. But we also wanna make sure that we continue that direct instruction in teaching students to read.
Okay. Have a question?
I was wondering what year you identified, Jennifer?
2013, 2014.
2013, 2014.
I wonder if that was when the test was re-normed for Iowa Assessment. I don't know for sure, but it was about that time.
Yeah, if we're gonna crack this open, part of what's happening in the Iowa Assessment data there is, there's Form A, Form B, Form E, Form F, and Form F like three times. So part of the difficulty in the comparison of that chart is it's different forms of the test. And so, especially since ours are largely the same number, so 72, 71, 74. Statistically, that's largely the same number. So when you start to get largely the same number in tandem with the form effect, it's hard to know exactly what's happening in that dataset. But I think your question's a fair one. How do we pick out the things that seem to be most effective with kids and amplify those and de-emphasize other things?
And this is one thing, you know, we do have the new data analytics folks. So I'm assuming as we get better and better with using the data and being able to pull out those things that have real value and meaning to us versus things that are just sort of noise in the background, we'll be able to really hone in on some of those effects and determine which things really do make a difference. I mean, that was the goal of, part of the goal of hiring them, so.
Yeah, and they're absolutely awesome. I can say that.
Oh, yeah. That's good to hear. We've been working on it for a long time, so we're glad that that's helping as well. One of the questions that, one of the questions that I had was, you know, in terms, you mentioned in August, you had some training with staff. So that must have been just an initial sort of training on this is what we're doing, this is how it works. You mentioned like Kennedy, just recently, had you come out and the whole staff had more training. And just knowing how technology works, is there an ongoing plan? I mean, as you learn best practices and in the buildings, teachers, helping teachers understand how to use this most effectively? Is that kind of going on as well, I'm assuming?
Yeah, and we're really doing a differentiated approach, you know. Special ed teachers came in for, was it three hours in August, you know, got the most training. And then what Maggie and Rose have been doing has been, we also did training with administrators in June. There's been some para-training. But right now, what they're really responding to is that, hey, can you come out and do this? We have a para still that's dedicated to doing some coaching with teachers in paras that's going out there. It's a great need because right now, what, we've handed kids devices. Now we need to make sure that they're implementing, you know, that they're using them in the best way that we possibly can. And usually, a sit and get for that doesn't work very well. You know, I need to go into the classroom, support you. Special ed teachers are acting as coaches, but they're also learning. But really, our theme all along here is we're learning together. You know, to do this, I felt like we could not wait two years while we got ourselves up to speed. And honestly, I think with technology, sometimes the best way to learn is, here's your new phone. How can I help you figure this out? You know, kids are great because they're, you know, they're sometimes know more about it than we do. But the software is pretty easy to use. I think the Kennedy teachers, that was one of the takeaways, was sort of like, oh, wow. You know, I can see all sorts of ways this can be applied.
Can I break in here too?
Yes, please do.
So another thing we've been doing is working with Holly Palmer-Schime and her, the blended work. And we've been also putting together some anytime, anywhere learning about the software so that when teachers get in a hole, I don't know how to do this, there's a safe environment that they can go and they can try and learn themselves on Canvas, which is our learning management system. So we're really trying to do a number of different things so that Rose and I aren't running out to a building every time somebody can't get the tool to work, right? And our drop-in sessions. So we've got, we know that there are a number of people who just wanna sit down next to you and show me what to do. And so we've set up a number of drop-in sessions over the next couple of months where people can come in. As far as a formal plan for next steps for training, I think it's just a continuous kind of, right now, we're putting one foot in front of the other. Pretty soon, we'll take a breath and look down the road a little bit.
Great. Thank you. Gary?
Going back to the assessment, Dr. Buck, hasn't the state just okayed a purchase of a new assessment? Or approved?
Yes, so the state did an RFP in response to a legislative expectation to do that. They chose an assessment from AIR, so it's a research outfit. The same ones actually that are doing work on measuring the implementation of the Teacher Leadership and Compensation System in the state. And the assessment's name itself is the Career and, I don't know, College Readiness or something? So not one that most, I'd say, in Iowa were familiar with. But they're actually in a process right now so that RFP can be, questions can be brought by other vendors that were in the space. So at least one of those vendors, I believe, has called into question the results of the RFP process. And then, I can't remember all the, there's additional next steps to that process that will ultimately lead to legislative action. I think it has to go through the Administrative Rules Committee.
It still has to go through legislation?
Not the actual legislature. I think it's gotta go through the finalization of the RFP process. And I think it has to go to Administrative Rules, but don't quote me exactly on that. My Department of Ed director days are kind of getting rusty now and blotted out. But there are still a couple more steps in that process before it's finalized. And then ultimately, there has to be a decision on if it's going to be funded.
Right. That could become a legislative.
That's where it could get, yeah, that interaction.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Wendy and Maggie and Rose, we wanna thank you all and all of your colleagues for all the work that you're doing for really all of our kids. When we say we want all of our students to be future-ready, we, as a board, definitely mean that. And so your work is hugely important, I think, to all of us on the board. And if there's other things that we can do to support your work, don't hesitate to let us know and we'll have a conversation with Dr. Buck. So there you go. All right. Thank you again so much. All right. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to our section for Board Governance. There are a number of policy manual revisions and some reviews. And with that, I'll turn it over to Laurel Day and Dr. Buck to explain to us a little bit, one, why there are so many different revisions this time and what this sort of means to us. And then maybe we can ask some questions about those policy revisions.
Yeah, so in particular, so we had a desk audit done by the Iowa Department of Education, just like lots of districts. And one of the things that came back is a number of our nondescript, these 500 and 600 series, they are sort of a network of policies. And their guidance to us is that they need to be condensed so that they're more user-friendly and able to be understood by the public. So we worked closely with our district council and they worked us through taking a variety of these 500 and 600 policies and aggregating, condensing them so that they're easier to use and put into that 100 series. So this is in response to a desk audit guided by council.
Are there any questions or comments about the policy proposals or changes? Gary?
I have a couple. One is on 802.8, the unmanned aircraft or aerial systems. And my question is, how does, if this is passed, how do we inform the public that these restrictions prevail? Will it be signage at district? I mean, I would not anticipate the average person that might be inclined to use an unmanned aircraft or aerial would go into our board policies to see if it's all right. So how are they, you know, in fairness to them, how are they become aware or made aware of what?
Yeah, good question. I don't have an answer for you tonight, but it's something we can certainly address as this goes forward. Right now, we're just trying to take back control of our airspace. Welcome to the modern era. So, how we communicate, I think that's a fair question that we can get on, yeah.
Personally, I have to say it has been used, so.
I do know that other school districts had implemented a regulation of this kind as well, so we could check with them and probably get some template of what they've been using for wording and very easily implement it. We'll look into that.
The second one is on, my other question is on the, I believe, the next regulation, 1002.5, memorials for deceased staff and students. I know that we currently have some memorials that are on, on school properties. I think there's one that comes to mind at, at Madison for Sid Wallace, the principal there, and a very appropriate bench. And I think at Harrison, there's a, a little reflective area in the back for two children that died in a fire there. Has this become a problem? I, I see schools, I know there should be some, maybe some control over it, but I see schools and community appropriately wanting to recognize or honor students.
Yeah, and we would still invite that, but we would invite it in ways that don't create these types of things you're describing. So, when the bench eventually falls apart, or the area, or the, you know, oftentimes a tree gets planted and then the tree dies, or the plaque that was on the tree deteriorates over time. So, it creates these, and they're very emotional things and should be, and, and totally respect that. So, where we have them, we'll continue to honor them. And if people are interested in memorializing, there are ways to do it that don't include planting trees and the benches and those types of things. And the first that comes to mind is, is there a scholarship or something else that could be created that would continue to benefit kids that don't create some of the other things that come along with the memorials that are around? So, it's just, it's, it's a difficult topic. We're just trying to find the right resonance between honoring and memorializing people and then the sort of long-term commitments that oftentimes come with the types of memorials that currently exist.
I would then maybe suggest that if there could be an addendum or something that might reflect some of those other possibilities, so someone would know if we can't do this what, and it might...
It's cross-referenced.
Gifts and donation.
And naming district facilities.
Do we have a, we do have a great avenue for that with the Cedar Rapids School Foundation, so there would be already an established source for making potentially tax-deductible donations for scholarships or other types of memorials. That might be good. All right. Jennifer, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I also had a comment on the proposed regulation 802.8 for the unmanned aircraft or aerial systems. And I just, I, I think it's a great idea, but I also have been at student-led STEM activities where they have used drones and just want to make sure that we're not interfering with our students' abilities to express their learning through alternate means.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, go ahead, that's fine.
And this regulation does give that authority and doesn't take away any of that educational opportunity through the superintendent or designees, still proving it for those kinds of reasons, absolutely.
So, would a release have to be signed every time a student wants to do that for an educational purpose?
I don't think we had talked about signing releases. What we talked about was that they would get approval from the superintendent or superintendent's designee for that particular project.
And practically, when they're under the authority of our employees, that's a different thing generally than what we're, what we're mostly worried about is, and this is an example of it that's happened, not here thankfully. So, there's a football game, and the team is having their huddle, and the drone is coming overhead, and they're looking into what's happening in the huddle. And so, absent a policy that says you can't have an unmanned aircraft over our airspace, it's just that much more complex to try to get people to stop using their drone at the football game or whatever it is. So, the, the real intent here is educational things that are under our authority, we continue to want to endorse those, and at the same time, recognize that the airspace over our facilities is ours, and we do have some say in it. So, it's trying to find that balance.
Some of that is already governed by the FAA. I'm not on a, on a amateur, an amateur license, that would be prohibited flying over crowds or over sporting events. A commercial license, I'm not quite sure, but there probably are some restrictions too on that. So, there are already some violations that could occur with federal...
We saw this as a proactive approach to something that was probably forthcoming. And as you'll notice probably too, or maybe it didn't, but that regulation was a sample from, from another district that had come to us, so.
Is there any cross-reference to the FAA requirements that might be helpful? I mean, we cross-reference in a lot of our policies, and if it is against federal law or regulations to be doing this anyway, that might be helpful for the public to understand. I mean, there is a safety concern as well involved, and I know the universities in the state of Iowa also have policies similar to this, so.
We can take a look into that for sure.
Any other questions or comments, Jennifer?
So, I would just like to recommend that a really clear communication go after principals saying that use inside a student project is allowed or would be easy to pass, be granted.
Okay.
Hard shutdown on something that could be really creative for some of our students.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this was just an information item, so we'll go ahead and, when have these come back at our...
Since we'll come back on the, at the October 23rd Board meeting.
Great, thank you. And with that, you all have your school board calendars, and I encourage you to fill out your meeting evaluations. Do you put down any future items that you'd like to discuss as we meet for future agenda planning and work sessions? We do follow those requests very closely, so it's important to us when we're doing that. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.